4:30. Oh, great. We have lots of company. Awesome. It's first off, we do have a kind of a change here a little bit. This is our public hearing for proposed 2025 budget. So before we do anything else, so anybody, we just have to say it three times. 2025 budget, which has been online for quite a while now. Does anybody have any questions about 2025 budget? Any questions about 2025 budget? And third time, as required by law, any questions about the 2025 budget? You can. There being none, gavel it out. All right, now we will begin the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Obviously, November 15th, yes, the day before opening season or day before opening day and deer season. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Nepper. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Savoy.
Here.
Commissioner Traynor.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here.
Next, entertain additions or deletions to the agenda.
I would like to delete the resolution that I submitted to have heard tonight. And we need to add the Regional Materials Management Planning Committee.
Okay, so we have one addition and one deletion support. Motion and support. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
I oppose.
I am opposed.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Nepper is opposed. Would it be to the addition or the deletion?
To the deletion.
To the deletion. Okay, thank you. Clarify. All right. Next is approval of county board minutes from October 17, 2024.
So moved.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Correspondence received in the clerk's office, page 31 and beyond.
I'll make the motion to distribute.
Motion. Support. Support. Open to discussion. I just asking, eagle is all over the place. What what is this about?
Well, it's like it's like environmental. I don't know what they actually have the stuff right here.
I just saw about nine things that are listed by eagle. I'm like, holy cow.
It's the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division. Used to be the DEQ.
So this is housekeeping, basically.
Yeah.
They're just informing us.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Next is public comment. The rules are, one, we will not engage in debate. I'm sure at the end, we will, we will certainly discuss many of the things that are are here. We also have a three-minute limit per person, please, and 15 minutes total for a subject. And so this, so we're where? And you also, online, you will get a chance also to, just so we know. Yes, sir. Hey.
Hi there. Just wanted to introduce myself. I'm State Representative-elect Parker Fairbairn. Just wanted to say I'm here listening. I know the Neveish islanders. This is a really passionate issue for them and just wanted to let you all know I'm here listening. Yep.
One else, please.
Hi, I'm Phils Reed. I'm president of the Neveish Island Improvement Association. Want to thank you for having us, give us this time. I want to introduce you to those are all full-time islanders back there, people that care about the island. And online, we have our community center and people from all over the United States listening. Because this, as he said, is passionate. We spent two to three years gathering data, presented it two years ago to UPTA to that with this schedule that we used to have is a death sentence for our island. Because we are losing the ability to attract full-time residents. We do not want to just be a summer island. We're losing, we've had several families that want to move here with their children, but the children can't come because we do not provide education. We do not support education. We do not support off-island employment within new employment hours. It's a serious issue. And we've been bringing it up constantly for years now. And I just wanted to let you know that if you want to talk to us about it, we've got lots of data and we've got lots of information and lots of people that are passionate about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lyric Tyner Hassler. I have the privilege of representing five of us Tyners back here, including my uncle Russell, who's lived every day of his life on Neveish, and Dorothy Tyner, who at 92 years young, is the oldest living female on Neveish. And for a long time, let's call it 40 years, she, along with my grandfather, operated the Neveish Island Ferry. For many years, they operated the Neveish Island Ferry from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM every 30 minutes. Many people remember that. And it's pretty impressive considering they did this while also maintaining our 100-plus-year-old family homestead, still active on the island. We are but one of several multi-generational families living on and with connections to Neveish. My connection is, I live in Richmond, Virginia, and I'm here visiting my family regularly, along with every member of my family, including four more who are joining us by Zoom today. Talking with my grandmother, we were discussing the ferry schedule and how it has progressed or regressed over the years. In her words, "The ferry schedule has not progressed. It has regressed. It's not up for debate. It simply has." The Michigan Department of Transportation and Michigan Senator DeMose, thank you for coming, support the funding request that has been pulled from today's meeting, the resolution. But I want to, when that comes back up, because I'm confident it will, I just wanted to earmark a couple of things. The request is for the Michigan legislature, of course, not for this county or for this board. And also, it is to earmark operational funding specifically for a third crew for the Neveish Islander so that it can provide one captain and one additional deckhand. And we're also requesting this funding come with strict oversight so that ensures appropriate use of that funding. The request is not frivolous. It is consistent with the strategic recommendations proposed in the findings of the Michigan State University report published in 2023 regarding Drummond, Neveish, and Sugar Island ferries. The report was funded by MDOT, cost $161,000 to produce, and took two years. The findings were unequivocal. Neveish Island is lacking sufficient access to mobility, healthcare, and other issues stated in that resolution at the back of your packet that has been pulled for today. MDOT and Senator DeMose agree and say support these findings, but it would be great to have the support of our county too as we pursue this funding. It is a critical component in this quest to support UPTA, the Eastern Upper Peninsula Transit Authority, Transportation Authority. We're supporting them in providing funding so that this organizational and operational staff can be added to the team. We want to provide the extra hours of ferry trip runs to provide necessary transportation to island residents. Unlike the needs of Sugar and Drummond Island, which have 24-hour service, we're not requesting that. We want hourly service from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. This is not unreasonable. Public transportation is an essential service. We ask you to please support Neveish Island Mobility by approving the resolution. Not before you today, but I'm confident it will come back up. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Laurie Miller from Neveish Island. I've met most of you, talked to a lot of you. Thank you for calling me today, Damon and Jim and Justin for meeting with me. I was prepared, obviously, to to address this issue today, so I'm going to do it in case I'm not here next time. So I know that we've, over the past several years, we've been trying to get a better ferry schedule so that people can work there. People can get to their health care appointments and get home. Lots of reasons, family, just education. Our kids can't even go, I've said this before, but I'll say it again. They can't even go to the Christmas concert. So I want to address some questions that I suspect, and I know that you are hearing out there. One, one comment that we've heard over the years is, you know what you're getting into when you move to an island? Yes, we did. But as Lyric said, it was a schedule before that would have been half hour. And there was a schedule that stopped at 6 o'clock every night. Then there was another schedule that had fairly reasonable hours that allowed some people to work off the island, some people to work on the island. By the way, we do have 14 businesses on the island. A lot of people don't realize that. And we don't, I don't know, somebody said that we don't want anybody coming over. Well, that's not true at this point. We, we, we need people to move there with families. But what family is going to move there? They can get internet now. Who's going to move there when they can't, when their kids can't participate in any outside activities? So we knew what the schedule was, and it was going to work for all of us as we made these decisions. Even as recent as a year or two ago, we had seven new, new people move on the island or couples or whatever, not kids, though, unfortunately. They knew what the schedule was, and it was going to work for them. It no longer works for them because UPTA took away trips. And they also took away our ability to, you know, come home or go off after hours, which we call a special, was $150 one-way plus fare to to do that. So if I go to the ER and I don't get out until after 6:00, I would be able to pay $150 to come home into my own house. We can't do that anymore. Only medical emergencies is all that we're allowed at this point. Another thing you might hear is, there's not enough people there. Well, we have 63 full-time people and up to 600 people during the summer. So there, there's a lot of people there. Like Lyric said too, we have many families with four generations. So that's important. There's a lot of elderly people there. Well, I don't think I should apologize for that. I think it's the good living that's on the island that we have a 92-year-old, 80-something-year-old right there, 94-year-old World War II veteran on the island. We have a lot of veterans too. What percent of the country serves in the military service? We have 15% of our full-time residents that are that are veterans. So that report that Lyric referred to, 204 pages, it's not the most interesting thing to read, but I've read it, my friends have read it. And it says that, you know, UPTA needs to be asking for more money because Michigan's match for for funding is not adequate. So UPTA hasn't asked for more money, and that's why we're here trying to get more money.
Oh, are you all set?
Yep. Okay.
As I said, we're up to eight minutes on this, so we've got seven more. So feel free, sir. Thank you.
I was talking to a nurse from the VA yesterday, or last week. She couldn't name all the clinics the VA had in Iron Mountain. Well, there's only three that I know of dental, optometry, and podiatry. So we all end up going to specialists. You know, in the community. Well, as you know, I told the VA, you gotta stop trying to hook me up in town here. By the time my appointment rolls around, the doctor quits. And that has been just happening. Think you all know it. So winter's coming on now. We now have, what is it, six extra weeks to that winter schedule?
Five months is seven weeks.
Yeah. So you know, it's really tough to make these appointments when you don't have a lot of time during the day. Really tough. I, you know, you go to Petoskey, you only got like a four-hour window where you can make those appointments. And if you don't make one, you might not get one for another three, four months. And that's all I have to say. I just wanted to bring that up, how tough it is. And now I hear that they want to give UPTA a chance to come up with some alternatives. What, to make things worse? We need to get this done. Come to some kind of resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matthew Keller has his hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
I'm gonna unmute him.
We'll go here. We'll come back here. We're not done. Just so you know. Who's got their hand up? Thank you.
Hello. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name is Matt Keller. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am president of the Neveish Pioneer Association, which is the property owner's association on Raines Island, which is also known as Little, Little Neveish, for those who aren't aware of. At Little Neveish, the Neveish Pioneer Association has approximately 100 members. A little background about the current residents of Raines Island, Little Neveish, down the southeastern section of Neveish Island. Most of current residents of Little Neveish are really more generational families, several which date back to 1905, first coming up to Neveish Island. Most of residences are seasonal, now used by third, fifth generations of families. My family first started coming up to Neveish around 1956. And at that, at that time, most seasonal residents lived primarily in lower Michigan, Ohio, or Indiana. We spent much of the summers at Neveish. Many working parents and friends would commute from downtown state to out-of-state and arrive for the evening or nighttime. Neveish Island ferries spend time with their families for the weekends and holidays. Today, many of the current generations that come to Neveish travel from all over the country. All are love and are drawn to Neveish no less, and everybody makes an effort every summer to come back to Neveish. Because the distances may travel from, limited ferry access truly impedes our abilities to make it to our residences. Most arrive in the late evenings and at night and need availability of all ferry options, especially if there runs after 6:00 PM to get onto Neveish. All of our children who live on a state, our young adults with future expanding families, and for years have been making plans to spend more time at Neveish. We're planning to remodel cabins. Two summers ago, my wife and I bought additional property in Neveish with plans soon to build another residence for our family, limiting the evening nighttime ferry runs. It just might make forces reconsider our future building, remodeling plans. Also, the generation of lifelong seasonal residents at Little Neveish, Raines Island, who are getting to retire soon and spend a lot more time at Neveish. Many of my peers have also been talking about making significant renovations, additions to the residences and properties for their families over the next several years using local contractors. Local running, reducing fair runs may influence these decisions on whether or not to expand and affect local contractor builders, suppliers, and service people impacting local economy. And additionally, and speaking with many of the local contractors up there, loss of evening nighttime ferry runs really greatly limit their abilities to take on supply and are complete projects timely. We're also property owners who pay taxes annually to see township with lower salary, support the schools, the ISD, Superior Library, all the Chippewa County service and infrastructure. Now, at Neveish, bought a new $5.5 million ferry that UPTA lobbied for and acquired, we're simply asking for additional operating funds to continue to improve the ferry runs and have to access our properties. Just ask that the Chippewa County Commissioners can work with UPTA, state and federal representatives, governing agencies, and Neveish residents to improve the daily island ferry schedule for Neveish, especially the evening nighttime ferries during the weekend, weekends, to allow us to access our properties and contribute to livelihood and growth at Neveish Island, Chippewa County in the future. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Do you have anybody else in the cyber sphere?
I don't see any hands.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Come back here. Anyone new over here? I'll say. Anybody else?
There, there is the, the Neveish Island Community Center that's gathered. I don't know if anyone from there wants to talk or not.
Is that Brian?
Yeah.
Brian, Brian, did you say someone has their hand up or not?
No, I said there, there, there's people gathered at the Neveish Island Community Center. I don't know if anyone wants to speak or not. It's roomful of people.
And can you? Anybody in the community center need to speak? This goes way past my ability and technology.
No, I think we're all good here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Let's call for public comment. When once going twice, declare public comment closed. Administrators report, and we will revisit this at the end. So do you all know? Administrator's report.
The regular monthly departmental reports from Health Department, Sheriff's Department, and Veterans Care. If you have any questions.
Make a motion to accept your motion.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion passes. Old Business Board Committee Agency Authority vacancy applications. We have what, about 10 openings there? And, and more, more than one applicant for a lot of positions. It's good to see that people want to be involved.
So you do need a motion to accept those nominees.
I saw more. Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know the nominations are closed. Are there, like, for the Construction Board of Appeals, since we only have one, but there are three openings, is there the ability to continue to accept additional if some come up before January, or is that not?
We accept them year-round.
Okay.
If we have to tell them. If there were three people there, the answer would be no. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Apportment tax rate request. Page 44.
Is it the revised apportionment and tax rates for 2025 post-election that we need to just have a motion to reapprove them? They come to you in October, but we always know there's the, the possibility of them changing during the election. And there was a township that had two villages that passed, so they did change.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion.
Support.
Support. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion passes. Next, opioid settlement. And these are separate.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted to go over one part for first react. We can put the, well, the resolution with a request. That would be separate.
Yep.
Okay. No, so that's all right. First mistake you've made this year in Crepe, we're in November. Doing well.
Right.
I'm not coming.
Nor should I. I don't teach math for real. The the RF, or the thing I wanted to to read is on page 44, and that, that was the goal of this. Make sure everybody's on the same page. That's the goal on top of page 52. Is to serve Chippewa County through development, implementation, enhancement, or expansion of evidence-based strategies or promising practices to prevent and address the adverse impacts of the drug overdose. This, we're on the same page. That is the goal of of the opioid settlement. My, just so we're on the same page. So request for funding proposal page 51. It's going to average about $16,000 a year, as I figured mathematically, right? 164,000 by 18 years. Oh, no.
No, we will have about $90,000 per year for the 18-year period that we'll be able to use, utilize in Chippewa County to take care of some of these issues that the folks and the agencies that serve them are having.
I just was looking at different set of numbers, obviously. Okay, there we go. Now, it's bottom page 51, the 90,000 available each year. There we go. And I think that's about it for us. That goes. So I would take a motion to request the RFPs.
I'd make a motion to to create a request for proposal, distributors request for proposals to all of the agencies in, listed in the proposal, but I do have a few amendments or two amendments to their proposal that I would like to request. Which would be paragraph one, the last line that says the amount of funds available will be, I'm sorry, on page 51.
I, I, hold on one second, Commissioner, for a second. You were, don't we need support before we do this?
I, discussion. I believe my motion would be based on two amendments. So I, unless there, unless someone has a, I believe, under Robert.
It's just a procedure. You used to, I make a motion for this.
I'll support it.
So now go ahead.
Purpose is a discussion.
Okay. Yeah. So there we go. We're good. You got.
Okay.
I second. So, yes, sir.
Okay, so my motion would be to approve this request for proposals with two deletions or modifications. One on page 51, the end of the first paragraph, which I apologize to the administrator for not talking about this earlier and having to do things like this on the floor. But the last sentence says the amount of funds available will be, will differ annually, and proposals will be accepted annually beginning in December. And I believe at our last commission meeting, we talked about this just being a one-year RFP and then potentially renewing it if it's going well and everything's, you know, working properly. We would continue to do it for the next nine or 10 years. But if a steering committee is created and the steering committee, let's say, comes up with a brand-new plan to utilize the funds in a different way other than RFPs to have that be, you know, an op, an option. So that line, and then on page 52, under availability of funds, if it states the same thing, proposals will be accepted annually will be between December 1st and December 31st. And I would like that just to be amended to say proposal will be accepted. Delete the word annually because it mentions the year, January 25 through December 31, 25. Right below that, and I know this was kind of a boilerplate template from the Michigan Association of Counties, which is why those were left in there. But those would be my only two deletions, just to allow this to be a one-year RFP for this year. And then we would be, you know, revisiting it and, and kind of going through the results and be able to tweak that more easily.
I, at least the way I am reading it in saying will differ annually, I think that gives you what you're asking for, which is we're going to revisit this every year, correct? I mean, and maybe I'm reading it wrong. But the whole idea.
My request. Can I, can I? I'm just, are you just looking to strike that last line, like, page 51, paragraph one, you're just looking to completely strike out that last line? I'm unclear on your.
Correct. My amendment would be to strike out the last sentence of the, on the overview paragraph that talks about it being available annually. And then on page two, I'm page 52, two would be removing the word annually. And again, you know, I'm hopeful that the RFP process goes perfectly well and we see good results. But I was just under the impression that the reason that this was not, you know, when I brought this up two months ago, it was due to the fact that people wanted to have more expert opinion, more steering committee involvement, things like that, since you don't have that established. The idea was to release a one-year RFP for 2025, have a steering committee establish, review what's happening, and come up with more, you know, input and develop, you know, feedback based on results. If the, if the commission prefers to leave that in, I am fine with that too.
Any other discussions, points of view?
I'm not sure if I want the changes that, I mean, if we're going to make changes, I'd like to table it and look at it again. I mean, we drafted what we thought was approved, and then at last minute, we're making changes.
Well, I'm not saying I'm going to be totally against it, but this is kind of.
Well, I'm not saying I'm going to be totally against it, but this is kind of. Put us on the spot and short notice here.
But I just, I look at it and annually to me means every year. So every is, I mean, that is what you want. You want this to be reassessed every year, correct? Commissioner.
I, I, I was under the impression that at the last meeting, the, the, the approval that was given by the county commissioner was for a one-year RFP. This with the word annually sounds like it would be released each year. I am perfectly fine with it being annually as well.
Annually means by definition, I don't teach English. Annually by definition means every year, every December, this will.
Correct.
We'll go through the process.
What I understood, that's the opposite of what I understood was the intent last meeting. But if I am perfectly happy to withdraw my request and leave it the way it is as well.
All right, shall we? And all right, so we will do this RFP. And we will review it annually in December. Correct? Administrator. We'll take a look at this every December.
I believe so.
That's, that's what, that's the way I read it. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion about accepting or do we have to withdraw his motion?
If you're not going to take that out.
He didn't.
I do understand the confusion because we did talk about early on when we met with the constituents down at the high school. We talked about trying to get money out into the community in twenty twenty-four. So there was going to be a one-time RFP to go out to try to get funds out by the end of the fourth quarter in twenty twenty-four. But then I thought we passed that. So then we were going back to the RFP. If you're going to set up this RFP, then you do need to set up the steering committee. It's a two-fold section. And I'm presenting it this way, and this is how it's been presented the whole time, even when Amy Delinki was here from Matt. That there's certain processes we need to follow because of the lawsuit. So just releasing, she advised us not to do just one time only. And so we went back to this. We've gone back and forth a couple of times. And I shared those emails that said, you know, she doesn't think that's a good idea because you're not getting the people involved that need to be involved to give you guys recommendations. And it's how it is.
But instead of one time, we're doing once a year. Ie annually. Okay, no, that's, that's, that's how we work through the process, so.
Chairman, I think the motion was and support was as drafted here. So we didn't accept the changes.
Is that correct, Commissioner Nepper? Are we understanding that?
Yes, yeah, because we could, we certainly. Revisit, well, revisit annually. So. Twelve months from now, we're going to have this conversation again. And we might continue with programs or we might say, no, we need to use the funds somewhere else. We'll do that every December. Well, I'm sorry, every November affected December, which is what we're going to do now. Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Savoy for that clarification. All right, any more discussion?
I would just say thank you to the administration for preparing it and having it updated for our review.
I will echo that also. Thank you, Kelly. I know you put a lot of time into this. Being no more discussion. All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes for the RFPs as stated in the packet. Written next on page fifty-nine, we have a resolution to create the opioid settlement steering committee. And if you look down at the therefore be it resolved, we have a lot of potential players here. So does not mean all of these are going to be there because that, you know, that might be crazy. But anyhow, this though will be a resolution, therefore we'll have to have a roll call vote. And.
Oh, many motion, I'll support.
Motion and support for the creation of opioid settlement steering committee. Any discussions before the roll call vote?
I do have one.
Yes.
I had a discussion. I know a few months ago I'd requested where we talked about having a joint meeting with the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Especially regarding their funding for for this and project. And I just didn't know if there's been any response yet or any. So I know, I guess I wanted to ask if if it would be appropriate, Mr. Chair, if any interested commissioners, perhaps if we attended a city commission meeting and and presented this resolution after if it's passed and then request that they set up, you know, a meeting with us.
I would, I would agree. If this is passed, you and I need to be at the next city meeting unless, of course, you know. Well, we'll see how deep in the deer season we go.
Chairman Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
The city manager has verbally told me they want to be involved with us. And I know you guys want your meeting too, but I do have a verbal and in writing, let's do it, you know, let's join forces when we get to that point.
Because I talked to Mayor Gary and yeah, everything was verbal, but you have something in writing?
I will double check.
Okay.
When I get back to my emails.
That would be great. That would make it a lot easier for you and I and any other commission. I don't know, because then we got open meetings issued. So you and I, but any others could go any other time or. Call them individually on that. So. Okay. Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nepper. Yes. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Motion passes. Resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one. So we'll, we'll do separate, they're pretty separate, so to speak. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one is the health insurance. Opt out, so to speak. Would take a motion.
As a move.
Motion for resolution twenty twenty-four, support.
Support.
Support, discussion. This is something we annually do. No surprise. All right. Any, anymore? Okay, then roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash three-two, twenty twenty-five Budget General Appropriation Act, page sixty-two in your packet. Make a motion. Motion. Support and support. Any discussion? Again, for housekeeping than anything else. Over discussion, okay. Ms. Clerk, sir.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. All right, next resolution.
Next, we have the Regional Material Management Planning Committee. C was removed.
So it would be this in your packet. All right, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, removed. We will revisit it sooner rather than later. All right. Where do we need to go?
I just need a motion to accept these nominees from Jeff Hagan at Regional Planning. This is part for the part of one fifteen material management planning, the grant that we are consolidating with MACOM in loose and working together for this project.
I'll make a motion. Support.
Motion and support to the. Agenda addition on regional materials match. Any discussion?
I do have a question on that. Are these of? These are not, I guess I was just curious as to how they were nominated and if there are opportunities in the future for others in the public to apply for those positions.
Mr. Hagan vetted them, and this is the list that came from them, so I can check with him. But this is the list he provided to us.
But I, I mean, they all, I, I know a number of those, the folks on the list and I'm sure they'll do a great job. I just didn't know if it's something that it would is that this is the normal way it would happen or in the future if these seats, you know, in five years, if it will be something where it's, you know, more of a standard nominating process.
Right out of regional. Sir, we're just rubber stamping this request.
The other discussions. All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes. Standing committee reports, finance, claims and accounts. Chairman Savoy.
The record meeting of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners Finance Claims and Costs Committee was held on Tuesday, November twelve, twenty twenty-four at this location. Meeting was called to order at four thirty P M with the quorum impressive. Approval of the agenda moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to prove the agenda as presented on voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
No public comment. We reviewed correspondence, information items, no action necessary, moved into the agenda item first with Health Department. Change to county F E I N and B S and A software moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove the Chippewa County Health Department. Changing over to county schedule ID number and adding department to current software for general ledger payroll, human resources and accounts payable. On the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support.
Motion and support for Health Department, change the county F E I N and B S and A software, basically software change. Streamline the process. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Next, Health Department moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Mark to approve and authorize the county health department advertising for tobacco-free living and Lamar at a cost of eleven thousand two hundred dollars on voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support. What's this per chance grant money or? See eleven two.
It is part of the M D H S, I believe.
Okay, so I, I figure, thank you. Michigan Department of Health Services, any discussion? All those in favor? I motion passes.
Again, Health Department authorized sale of vaccine fridge and freezer. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove and authorize the sale of a fridge freezer for one dollar. On the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
I'll support the motion and support. And just so you know, we tried for months and months and months and nobody would buy it. So I don't even know who got it. Would have been great for Deer Camp. That's just me. Any other discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Health Department Nurse Addendum to close Chippewa County Health Department H D hybrid. Moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to prove and authorize the change on the voice vote motion carried. Would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for for the Shack R F Q. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
This was for.
That was for the hybrid, closing the hybrid division.
Oh, sorry, I bet. All right, try it again. The Health Department merge denim, sorry about that. All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes, sorry about that.
Health Department Shack R F Q moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove the office renovations of the SUSE Health. Care Center Shack as presented on voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support for the Shack R F Q. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services and moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove and authorize payment to Kenrose EMS Education for the twenty twenty-four county E M T basic emergency medical technician course on the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support.
Motion and support for the O E S medical training. Any discussion? Those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Sheriff's Office Storage Training Building Change Order moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to authorize approved. The final change order for sheriff's storage training building on the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support for the sheriff's office last change order, and we stayed within our ten percent overrun budget, which is excellent, especially with the press and everything. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Nexus Surveyor moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize signatures of the grant between the State of Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs and Chippewa County for the grant application to be submitted to the Office of Land Surveying and Remonumentation on the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Motion and support for surveyor. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Administration, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize Jefferson Solution Corporation to complete the county's G S S B seventy-five reporting for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support for retiree update. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Finance, Claims and Accounts for October. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to recommend approval of the county of October, county bills and payroll. General claims, other fund claims, payroll and Health Department claims of payroll on the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support to pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Finance. Financial hardship policy update moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to authorize and prove the update on the voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support for financial hardship. Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Finance F Y twenty twenty-five budget, general and special funds. Was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Mark to approve the F Y twenty twenty-five budgets for the general fund and special funds as presented, acknowledging the contracts, annual software support, hardware, software requests, equipment requests, non-union pay skill and fee for cremation permits as presented on a voice vote motion carry that was so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion about the general fund, special funds as presented? All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes.
Next was committee comments, the chairman comments, then moved to adjourn by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at four forty-five P M. And I move for the acceptance and distribution of this report.
Support. Support. For the minutes as present. Any discussion? And you, yes, sir. All those in favor? I opposed, motion passes. Next, Commissioner report on meetings as board representatives and general comments. Or shall we? Mr. Grant, yeah, I'll start our way around.
Real quick, general business at the last upcap meeting there, the, it was the Mac, we had Mac was there, they were very. Very helpful this. I mean, they have, they always have a lot of knowledge. It's great to hear from them. But their main point this time was that if there's one thing that's going to get worked on in this lame duck, look for the the tipped wage and the minimum wage bill to be repealed, that there, that's, that's about the only thing they've got that they can work on in a bipartisan fashion. So that's, that's a, that's a hot subject there right now, so. If you folks are interested in it, call them up, let them know what you think. And then as far as the Neavish Island ferry situation, I, I really appreciate the, the resolution. I think it's something we can definitely work with. I, I'm positive we'll be able to work with our legislators down in Lansing. And I think it's important that we get, we get buy-in from all of the concerned parties. And so we can make as big a voice as possible when we go in for this request. So I thank you folks very much for coming. I appreciate your tenacity and, and, you know, dogging this, keeping up on this, and that, that's important. That's what, that's what has to be done. So. That's what that's what has to be done. So thank you very much.
I I just wanted to, yes, also comment on the Neavish Island situation. And appreciate Commissioner Lawrence really working on that in his district. But I definitely want to continue to be helpful and I do want to, I guess, kind of go on record saying for our for our agencies out there such as UPTA that are appointed and hired. It is no surprise that voters will come to the county commission looking for help. We are beholden to the voters. And therefore, you know, I think it's something that we have to really take seriously in terms of working with all the different agencies out there in Chippewa County. And, you know, really making sure that people are listening and and hearing of people's opinions. And you know, I I think we know that budgets are are one of the biggest challenges. But on the other hand, we have to look at Chippewa County as a whole and look at what do we want to see as the future for all of our land? Whether it's an island or the mainland, and how do we make sure that we are creating a a growth friendly and, you know, a an area that people want to live in, whether it be on an island or a mainland. You know, while still looking at how to make sure that we're being fair to the voters. But all that being said, I agree with what Commissioner Lawrence stated about making sure that we're engaging. You know, one of the things with this resolution is that it was fairly, perhaps maybe abrupt or a surprise to some organizations out there, so we want to get their buy in and make sure that they're involved. And I appreciated all of the different comments that I heard tonight. And then separately, I've been continuing to work on a number of issues with various agencies around the county related to veterans services specific to constituents in my district. And wanted again, say thank you to all the organizations out there. We actually just worked to help fix a veterans home in a roof in in District One. And Habitat Pre-Manity, the American Legion, the Veteran, the V F W, Vietnam Veterans. And even the Brimley V F W all stepped up to pitch in funding to help the veteran. And then separately, also working on a number of issues, some homelessness issues in District One. And enjoyed working with the hospital with the the tribe and especially community action and others that all have been working together to try to support various folks in the in our community, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Savoy, sir.
Going to pass for tonight.
I'd like to thank Sue Scholes for the presentation they put on on Veterans Day. That was a nice program they did and hopefully they do that every year. And another one is over in Neavish Island. I gotta let the people know on Neavish, I'm never going to give up on this. I'm going to work for you until we get this fixed. I've been told I'm crossing district lines. I shouldn't be doing that, but Scott Shackleton told me at the beginning that you're a county commissioner for the county, not your district. So I'm going to represent anybody that comes to me. I'm going to work for you. Like it or not, you got me.
We like. Let's see, I've I've got a little longer list. First off, I'd like to thank you all for coming and you there, because I know life is busy, especially tomorrow being what tomorrow is. But ten percent of Chippewa County, ten percent of of its residents are veterans or active duty. And there there is this feeling that that what the Veterans Association does for them is somehow charity or welfare. It's not. It's things that you as a veteran have earned. They are for you to use. You have fifty percent higher average of veterans than the than the rest of the county. So we talk about boots on the ground. If you know a veteran that's struggling or 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 is having issues or is facing homelessness or any anything. Our Veterans Agency will will listen and will act as they have done. Commissioner Savoy has been our our representative with with Veteran Affairs. And a a a veteran, a public servant from the time he's seventeen years old. And went to Vietnam and then undersheriff and sheriff and then county commissioner. The building named after him is but a small token of of what we owe Commissioner Savoy. And to to Katie and Kelly, Sheriff Bitner, who kept the secret in a small town, which is no, no small task. I think the building being built was probably easier than keeping it quiet, so well deserved that we can recognize his entire body of work and his dedication to you. Residents of Chippewa County, whether you're islanders or mainlanders, or even if you live someplace like Moose County. He he represents everybody. Campaigning, you know, they they talk a lot about politics being bad. I I did get eight holes on my legs. I got bit by a pit bull, not once, but twice while I was going and doing doors. But it was pouring rain, seven people, seven people I don't even know. Offered me umbrellas. Here, take the umbrella. We know you'll bring it back. I mean, who does that? Where does that happen? But in in Chippewa County, when it was windy, come in, come in, we'll we'll talk inside. It was cold, so I thought, oh, you need a jacket. You're out there. I'm like, eh, I'm already wet. And it just did me so much good to to talk to people and see that that our people are good people. And and literally offer you the jacket off their back. It it was really good. And and yes, there were I've had done a dozen people say, you know, I had to switch. I couldn't do all, I had to switch to get you to get your thing. That they would do that. Because they know me because I've taught and coached here for about thirty years now. Really felt good in that and at the Veterans Assembly, which I now have to go to as a guest because I'm retired. One of my students came to me and said, Coach, you're the first person I voted for. And that just melted my heart, that that one of our eighteen year olds came to me and and I'm just like, oh. You know, that that meant more to me than any other vote, just that that he he would do that. But it also shows, you know, the kids are watching. So when we go home and we talk bad about the other party or other candidates or other things, they're listening. And and we need to to watch what we say, because they will generally quote us word for word what we said and usually do it in public with a lot of people. Beware the children. They they hear very well. The Veterans Day was awesome. That was just, and our kids are so attentive and so well behaved. And yes, I'm I'm prejudiced for Sue kids, Sue high kids, but listening and and participating and, oh, gosh. It was a great last week. Steve Clark Woodgate election, another twenty two hour day. Just what he does, what the entire clerk's office does. That was great. I I heard I was behind most of the night. But I I went to bed early because, one, I'd had no more control of it, two. If if this is not the direction the good Lord wants me to go, he'll open another door. But it 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 went, I'll be obviously well. I very thrilled and honored to be your chair and your chair. And yes, I went to the meeting, the UPTA meeting, and and absolutely, I have to take a larger look. But I think we all do. I think we all have that, you know, what we're we're going to take a look at the big picture. And if if we can do things to to help make your life easier, then we absolutely can. Realize, like you said, I my guess is, and I'm only one vote, that you will have our full support individually. Where that goes is, you know, our our pay grade is here. The people will make the final decision. Their pay grade is up here. Correct, Parker? I'll pitch on the spot. But in in the end, they will be the desires. But what we can do to help you, we will. I just, this job is not nearly as important as as you might think it is. In the end, we are we are are handcuffed, if you will, by the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And is what it is. We do the best we can with the constraints we have. And as we get to near the end of the year, serving with you all has been an absolute honor. And it's this is a good thing. This commission works and it works for you and it should. And if it ever doesn't, let us know. And we'll do what we can. That being said, I would take.
To make the motion adjourn.
I'll support.
Thanks very much. All those in favor? Commission is.